This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Glen Ridge Board of Education. Board met tonight in executive session and we're now ready to continue with the public portion of our meeting. We had a number of written communications this week. I should say, we have had a number of written communications since our last meeting. And I will read them off. Most of them deal with various aspects of the reopening of school. But we've had communications from Amy Physikas, Christina Savage, Annie Pockridge, Mary Lynn Savio, Elizabeth Nutty Combe, Laura Sporl, Lauren Johnson, and Jody Brooks, all on aspects of reopening, either in favor of all virtual education, in favor of in-person education, asking questions about cleaning and other practical things. And all of those emails have been answered. We had one email from Kareema Ravinal asking about progress on the diversity goals. And I believe Dirk that you're going to discuss what the Equity Committee is doing later on, yes?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That is the public correspondence. The President's report, first of all, I want to... And we have a long time until we retire. And I know that a collective sigh went up in Glen Ridge when people saw the agenda and saw Elaine Rusonello is retiring. After many, many years, the district has a free bank. It is, it is a very difficult thing. I think most of us thought Mrs. Rusonello was the closest thing that anyone would ever see. And she certainly made a difference in the lives of countless small people having their first school experience. And we will never forget her. So thanks to Mrs. Rusonello for her time in the U.S. I wanted to also thank, now that we've gotten to the first week of school, I wanted to thank the administrators, educators, our entire staff for their hard work, their ability to adapt at the last minute, their ability to move forward even when there's very little guidance from the federal government. So thank you for all. On the legislative side, legislators are in the process of coming up with a budget. We have to have a state budget done by December 30th. There will be no public hearings in the budget this year as there would normally be. But the various cabinet departments, including the Department of Ed, will be appearing before the either the Senate Budget Appropriations Committee or the Assembly Budget Appropriations Committee. The board, the interim commissioner gets thrilled tomorrow on the DOE's budget priorities. So we'll probably tell a great gentleman about where they are at in the DOE this time. And that is the President's report, Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Betsy. I'm going to share my screen roll. So some general announcements. First of all, I also like to recognize retirement Elaine Rusonello. Just an immense passion for that, her age group that she taught, the pre-K students. Probably one of the most dedicated individuals I've seen in my 25 to 30 years in education. Just here early in the morning, here late at night. She was working throughout the summer to set up her classroom. And unfortunately, unforeseen circumstance resulted in her having to retire before the school started. And I know she must be devastated not to be with students at this time. But we want to wish her the best and she certainly will be missed. Couple of good news about high school rankings. And I don't like to put a lot of weight into them, but I do like to recognize Glen Ridge was received very high ranking from the U.S. News and World Report. In New Jersey, they were, we were ranked number 18. 14 other schools in front of us were admission-only schools. So that ranking can be skewed a little when you include admission-only schools. And nationally, we're ranked number 396. And New Jersey Public Schools for the second year in a row was ranked first in the country by Education Week. So all the teachers throughout the state can be, celebrate that honor. And I want to make sure the public knows on Election Day, November 3rd, by mandate from the governor, all schools are physically to be closed. But we can have a virtual day that will count towards 180 days. So on November 3rd, all of Glen Ridge will be a virtual day. And I encourage everyone to go out and vote. Just want to talk a little bit. We've been open now for six days. It's been a tremendous experience to have students and staff back into the buildings. Throughout New Jersey, NJ.com reported that 69 districts are currently have an all-in-person model. 238 districts an all-remote model. 388 districts have a hybrid. And we will, we fall under the 28 districts. That's a combination where we're doing an all-remote at the high school level. But the K through 6 is a hybrid model. Added a few pictures or just some ideas how school has changed a little bit. By every entrance, there's a hand sanitizer. So as the students and staff come into the building and visitors, they have to sanitize their hands. The classrooms all have hand sanitizers. So they, as they come into the classroom and leave, or leave the classroom, they should also be sanitizing their hands. Our water fountains are closed. There's signage throughout the building of where to walk and keeping six feet apart. And you can see a typical classroom now in our district where we're social distancing. It's hard to see, but we do have the plastic barriers up on the desk. And you know, it's, the classrooms have really become much more simplified because students aren't sharing material. There's nice, so teachers aren't putting the material out as much. So this makes it a little bit easier to clean. But it's also a little, you know, of your traditional style classroom with students sitting in rows and facing forward. And hopefully, that won't last too long because we do enjoy having cooperative experiences and working within groups. And we think learning takes bets in that model. But as we're going through pandemic, we're making sure we're following all the protocols to have a safe environment for our students and our staff. Just talking a little bit about our enrollment. As you can see, our enrollment in the primary level has been pretty consistent. The last couple of years, the pre-K numbers have been down. Last year, it's because we had a late opening of central school, which caused some families not to enroll. This school year, our pre-K numbers were creeping up to 70. But as we got closer to the opening, a lot of families decided to not send their kids to school or keep them in the preschool that they had previously been in. And our kindergarten first grade numbers are typical class sizes that we see. Our second grade is a little bit out of the box when it comes to our grade level sizes. That 119, we haven't seen that number that low in the other grade level for a number of years. So that is a bit of a blimp. At Ridgewood Avenue School, our numbers are staying, again, consistent. We're typically between a 130 and a 150. Last year, the sixth graders were a large size and they've moved on to the seventh graders. But our numbers are staying pretty consistent. And at the high school, because we've seen some larger classes come into the building and some smaller classes in the last few years graduate, our high school numbers are up a little bit higher. But overall, our district numbers are consistent. We are continuing to find ways to try to lower our class size numbers. And we go back several years ago, that was the purpose of purchasing central schools. So we could certainly addressing some of the class size issues at the lower levels. And our classes at the pre-K and kindergarten level have been low. This year, we did add an extra section at the first grade level at four. So our first grade class sizes are on the lower end also. And that second grade level, as I mentioned, is already at 119, a small level. So their class sizes, again, are probably on the lower level when compared to the other grade levels. Every year around this time, I do report out to the Board of Ed, classes that are at 25 or more students. Typically, there's some primary or elementary classes that reach that level, but this year there isn't. All our 25 or plus class sizes are at the high school level. And you can see the number of course, the courses that have classes over 25 or so. And throughout the summer, what I wanted to spend some time today is really talking about our Equity Committee. We've had about 25 staff members, including pairs, teachers, and administrators on this committee, working on goals of really looking at our equity issues and how we can create a better environment for every student in the district. So I'm going to go over these goals. There's a number of action items. And I'll just speak about some highlights of those action items. The first couple of goals are personnel, when we're looking to increase the number of faculty and administration with diverse backgrounds. And we've talked about this in the past. Really promoting ourselves in the websites and through other social media methods. Making sure that we're reaching out to all colleges and the historic black colleges and universities to try to recruit candidates in. We're looking for ways to promote interest in the schools through our paras, through our coaches, through those who are working discovery programs. Any way that we can start increasing that diversity in the district will help us attract more candidates. So that is probably one of our top focuses when we are looking at our goals within this committee. The second is making sure that we have a welcoming environment so that when we do hire candidates of diverse backgrounds, that they feel welcomed and a part of the school system and a part of the faculty, and they want to stay here. So we have some, you know, making sure that we're doing activities that are, promote diversity, that recognize cultural events and just a different historic perspective. And also, we want to make sure part of a lot of this training, especially when it comes to the hiring practice and making sure our, the environment is an environment conducive to all and welcoming to all, is working with our administrators to make sure that happens and making sure that they have the necessary training to reach these goals. This goal is our professional development goal. And I will give a recognized Dr. Harris who's spent a lot of time on this committee and especially when it comes to professional development. The goal here is to promote a higher level of awareness, humility, and stamina to discuss racism in an effort to eliminate systematic racism within the district's culture. So this week, during the summer, there's a lot of effort and time put into a newsletter. It's really an interactive newsletter and it's going to be released this week or early next week for the staff. And we're talking about creating a website. So all this information and promotion of, the newsletter and the events that we are doing within the school can be shared with the community. But the newsletter is going to be more interactive. It's going to try to raise awareness. It's going to provide instructional strategy for teachers. It's, you know, it's a little bit of educating the individual, but also bringing resources and tools to the teacher. So we're really looking forward to that. I've been a part of that development and I've just been so proud of what they've created so far. So our plan is to make sure that we're using the newsletter at our monthly staff meetings in each building to have discussions and to just create some dialogue, which is very important that we have it at this time. We're also looking at bringing in a number of speakers if they can become available to us. Explored, and we're exploring different training. Right now, Monmouth University is offering some program that you bring a team down, well, virtually will be this year, to get trained throughout the school year. So we're looking at creating a team and being a part of that. The next goal is making sure that we're giving all students an opportunity to be leaders within the district and making sure. So we're going to look at the leadership roles and who's serving those positions and how we can promote and encourage individuals of diverse backgrounds to become a part of those organizations and start taking leadership roles if they're not already. We're looking at establishing some clubs that serve the population. I know Mr. Lawler has already had discussions at the end of last year with a group of students. And this was a suggestion that came from that group of students. So we'll be following up on that early in this school year. And we want to make sure that we're providing mentors and leaders for our younger students. So we're going to be reaching out to our older students and finding ways that they can go down and interact with our younger students. And we've done similar things with other groups where we've had, you know, either Future Educator of America or Peer Leaders or Middle School Mentors go down and work with the various grade levels of students. We want to make sure we develop a method for students to report concerns and issues. And we want to make sure that they're comfortable doing so, that they have an avenue to turn to if there are concerns. So we're looking to establish a peer committee with a faculty advisor. So those issues, if they do occur or when they do occur, that we're able to address them in a proper manner. And we want to make sure that we're not only raising awareness with our staff through professional development, but we want to raise awareness with our students. And you know, that's going to happen through having forums, having student surveys and student presentations to discuss the relevant topics. Lastly, our couple items are curricular-based. We want to make sure we include diversity within each curriculum unit. And this summer, we changed our curriculum template to include diversity inclusion as a category. So anytime we're writing curriculum, and it happened this summer with our language arts curriculum, that every unit will have activities related to diversity inclusion within the unit. So that ensures that we're making sure it's being covered across all curriculum. We want to make sure that we're including instruction adopting material that accurately portray contributions of individuals of diverse backgrounds. So we're going to be reviewing what we currently have in place when we start looking at our curriculum, but also what's happening, you know, as far as the literature we're assigning the reading. Who's it written by? How's it portraying individuals? What's happening at the lower elementary? Do students have an opportunity to read books that include diverse characters in them? And we want to make sure that the students are immersed in a multicultural environment. And that starts with what they're visually seeing in the classroom. So we're going to start walking around into classrooms and just doing a quick assessment of what's on the walls and what are the students being exposed to on a daily basis? Because that's going to send a strong message of what we value. And last item is, we had a social-emotional learning committee. And this really just overlapped with a lot of the other work we were doing. But we want to make sure we're creating a welcoming classroom for all students. So we talked a lot about this is happening through our social-emotional learning committee, which one of the categories is social awareness. So we're starting to do some professional development with the staff under those, under that category. Morning meetings have been happening at the elementary level for some time, for a number of years. And we want to make sure that we're encouraging that and recognizing, you know, the different routines, the different backgrounds and cultures. And I know just today that Guidance Counselor at Ridgewood Avenue, Mrs. Bass, sent something out about, you know, just doing a background on where your name came from and just promotes a little understanding of everyone's culture. Presentations, we want to make sure that we're going to be able to provide presentations for our students. And last, again, you're seeing the overlap, is just collaborating with students as being a part of this process. So we have a number of goals set out this year. I met earlier this week with the Equity Committee and we'll continue to work on starting, putting some of these action items into place, making sure that we're working with other groups. I know the high school English department has reached out to the Glen Ridge Diversity Group in town. And we will continue to work with them. There's a lot here that we'd like to accomplish and it's one of our priorities. And I've already spoken to the board this year of making sure when we establish, when they establish their board goals, that equity is one of the goals that will be established for the district. And that's the presentation for today.
Okay. Board members, questions or comments?
I do. I really liked what you presented today, Dirk, and I'm really excited about it. And I'm just curious, is the Equity Committee kind of going to go around and see that this stuff is implemented in the classroom? Where is that checked?
Yeah, our goal is to work with the administration. But we, the Equity Committee has members from all the buildings. So we made sure that they were represented and they can become, lead some of those discussions we're having during the faculty meeting. One of the things that we did talk about is, instead of asking the administrators to lead those discussions all the time, the faculty meeting is creating videos. So the entire district is getting the same message. And we want to make sure we're consistent. So the Equity Committee members will be overseeing that, but it's also going to rely on the administration as a part of that.
Okay. Other questions or comments from the board?
Will the newsletter be published outside of school for parents or?
Yes. So Dr. Harris and Mrs. Boswell are working together and creating a Google site for the Equity Committee. So that information will be made public, including the newsletter.
And one other question. Is it too early to ask for specifics about the diversity and inclusion curriculum additions, modifications?
No, it's not too early. When you start looking at the English department, I think if you, reviewing some of the curriculum, I would suggest anyone who's interested. I don't know if it's been posted yet. So let me find out if it's been posted. But a lot of it, it was just reviewing what they were offering as literature assignments in the classes and revising that to make sure it's a more well-rounded offering than it maybe has been in the past. But you know, literature is a terrific avenue to have those discussions. You know, we frequently are asking our students is really to analyze the reading and do critical reading. And the teachers will be leading that through this process.
Any other questions or comments from the board? All right. We have come, thank you, Dirk. We have come through the first public comment period for questions and comments on agenda items only. The rules pertaining to our new protocol are as follows. Each person will have two minutes, and I will be timing that to give us their comment or question. Each individual, audience member will have one opportunity to speak in this public comment period. And then if they wish it, a second opportunity to speak in the second public comment period at the end of the meeting. Please, using the participants function on your, on the bottom of your screen, raise your hand and we will recognize you in turn. Be a little patient with us because sometimes it's hard to see all the hands. And if you have multiple questions, please ask them all at the beginning of your comment or multiple comments or questions. Please ask them at the beginning of your comments so that we can also answer them hopefully in the order that you suggested that you've given them. So those are the protocols. Also, if you find that you have questions that do not get answered tonight, you can always email us. Email us, email Mr. Phillips, email the board, and we will, we will get back to you. Okay. With that, let's start the public comment period. And I seem to have lost my video. So one moment.
Tricia, you are unmuted. You can comment.
Thank you so much. Yes, thank you so much, Winnie. Thank you, Elizabeth. And Dirk, thank you for the update on the Equity Committee representing the DIA. Very encouraged by what I've heard today to the Equity Committee. I too would like to understand, or I should say, we as the DIA would like to understand some of the specifics on each one of those initiatives. But most importantly, Equity Committee. So we would like to be a part of the committee. You've mentioned Dr. Harris, and it sounded, and I know that weight can be for just one person of color to be representing the whole district. So we're offering our services up to be a partner with you by having a seat at the table. So can we be extended a chair on that Equity Committee? Thanks.
Thank you. Dirk?
Yeah, well, I was planning on reaching out to you guys either later this week or early next week. I think that was, would be the next natural move. I do want to clarify that Dr. Harris is not the only individual of color on the committee. We have several staff members with diverse backgrounds on the committee. So, but Dr. Harris being an administrator has taken the lead in a number of departments. So I'll invite her to join us and we can certainly work together, which is our intent from the start.
Okay. Other questions? Mrs. Shaw?
Yes, I see that on the agenda, there are many, many names of new hirees, whether they're, you know, full-time replacements or part-time or substitutes. And I was, I mean, a lot of names. And I was wondering what percentage of them were, you know, of color. I know at the last meeting, Kareema mentioned that she hoped that we would see some improvement with all these hires coming up. And I was wondering what percentage there might be of persons of color there. That was my first question. The second one is, the only place I could find a link to join this meeting was on the Facebook page that does not even belong to the school district. It's run by home and school. You know, it wasn't in the usual locations on the district's webpage. And I just think that that speaks ill, that the only way there was a link that I... And I just think that that speaks ill, that the only way there was a link that I and others could find was on a Facebook page that some people may or may not be on and not even coming from an administrator. So maybe you could go back to putting it on the Board of Education webpage so there's a consistent place for it.
Okay, thank you. I don't know, we've had so much shifting around of personnel over the summer because of the whole COVID situation. Dirk, do you have any figures on the number of members of minority groups, persons of color that we've hired over the summer?
We've hired 21 staff members over the summer and six of them come from a minority background, which puts us, you know, between 25 and 30%.
Okay, and then as far as links to the meeting, I didn't realize that it was not up on our website.
Actually, the link to tonight's meeting is on the main webpage, it's a headline.
Thank you. That's the voice of wisdom from Winnie Boswell.
I'd just say that more than one person couldn't find it, so maybe we were looking in the wrong spot, but it wasn't where it normally is.
Thank you, Mrs. Sawa. Deena?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I just have a comment also regarding the Zoom details for this meeting.
Yes.
And it's not just for this meeting, but even in previous meetings, it was always very difficult to find the information. I think most of us are joining, you know, using our phones. So when you go to the BOE page, it's next to impossible finding it. So I always have to get the number from the Glen Ridge Facebook page, you know, the form that some of the kids are running. So I just wanted to make the suggestion that can you make this information available on the actual agenda? Whenever people have a meeting and you generate the agenda, the agenda should have the details of where the meeting is going to be held. So I just wanted to make that suggestion for you to consider.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Jocelyn Gottlieb.
Hi, I just wanted to say that it's really refreshing to hear about the work that the Equity Committee is doing and also in light of the number of emails that I'm sure you're receiving daily, Dirk, maybe if the list of the members of the Equity Committee could be published or representatives from each school so that then people would know who to reach out to if they had specific input that they wanted to share. So that could come in more broadly instead of just being directed through you or the principals.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments? Okay, Haley.
Hi, I'm Haley Krisher and I just want to say that it was really great to hear Dirk's presentation about what, you know, what it has come about so far. And I think it's going to be a great thing, a great place to start, a great jumping off place. I also would like to just suggest some more transparency as the previous person had mentioned. Just being more specific about, you know, the hires, how many people of color and, you know, what kind of literature that you're looking at and how, as Heather had mentioned as well, how, if there's check, going to be sort of checkboxes on everything, you know, as, so that we know exactly what's happening as you're implementing these new strategies.
Okay, we will certainly take that into consideration and it's a good suggestion. Other questions or comments? I don't see any new hands. Okay, that being the case, we will continue with our regular agenda. And just a reminder that we have a second public comment period at the end of the meeting for comments or questions on agenda or other items related to the running of the schools. So board members, you have in your packets, I should say rather, that it is the first meeting of the month. I know that many of you have not had committee or liaison meetings yet for the new school year. Is there anybody who has a report?
Hi, I just want to mention that Grace is going to be having their first meeting on September 23rd and I'm assuming that they'll be sharing with the community more specifics on how to join that going forward.
Okay, thank you. Other reports? All right, I went to the first meeting of the Ridgewood Avenue School Home and School Association, which was very well-attended. I think probably we had more people on the Zoom meeting than we have had in the recent past in the in-person meetings. Amanda Goodwin reported for the teachers and thanked the home and school for supplying, apparently the donut truck, on the first day that the teachers were back, which was apparently a big hit with the teachers. Mr. Donovan gave a lengthy report on a lot of specifics of the hybrid and virtual model. He said, "As yet, no students have had elevated temperatures, the children are getting into routines, the arrivals and departures have been smooth." But he said, "There's still lots to figure out between the hybrid and virtual education." There were some Wi-Fi issues that Mr. Phillips has alluded to and those have been fixed. The air conditioning is working to the extent that sometimes people are complaining it is too cold. There's lots of new staff and they are great people. He commented, Dr. Donovan commented on back-to-school night, he said it's not the same, but he's gotten some good feedback on that. And they're ready to have a new parent, new child luncheon, which Mrs. Boss is organizing. And they are setting up a house system similar to what you recall from Harry Potter and he will have more details on that going forward. So a good first meeting for Ridgewood Avenue, very high energy, I think a lot of optimism, maybe cautious optimism about the new year. Does anyone else have a committee or liaison report? All right, you have minutes in your packets, the minutes from the meeting of August 17th, both the executive session and regular meeting. I have to commend Barbara on the excellent minutes because of those meetings, for those of you who attended, we had lots of questions and comments, which we always welcome, but it does make it a challenge for the person to be mentioned. Thank you, Barbara. Has everyone had a chance to look at your minutes?
Yes.
Michael, would you move the minutes?
Sure, I'll move M1 and I also want to commend Barbara because that was a tour de force, great job. So I move, I move M1.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second from David. Any further discussion on the minutes? Okay, Barbara, minute taker extraordinaire, will you call the roll? Mr. Bonnet?
I think you're muted.
You're muted. You're muted, Ms. Anthony. Mr. Bonnet?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Duloo?
Aye.
Ms. Lang?
Aye.
Mr. Romano?
Aye.
Ms. St. Auburn?
I too, exec session and abstain for the regular meeting.
Dr. Yares Ramos?
Aye.
Ms. Ginsburg? Aye. Motion carries. Personnel, as we mentioned, there are numerous personnel items. Tracy, would you move the personnel items?
Yes, I moved P1 through P9.
Okay, may I have a second? Second. That was from Ally? Yes. Okay. Non-personnel-related items takes place in executive session. So if there is no further comment on personnel items, would you call the roll, Barbara? Mr. Bonnet?
Aye.
Ms. Boialvolucci?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Duloo?
Aye.
Ms. Lang?
Aye.
Mr. Romano?
Aye.
Ms. St. Auburn?
Aye.
Dr. Yares Ramos?
Aye.
Ms. Ginsburg? Aye. All right, we've come to the business items and before we move those, I want to draw your attention to item B6, which is a generous donation from the Forest Avenue Home and School Association of Chromebooks, license and Chromebook cart in the amount of $7,700. Thank you so much to the Forest Avenue Home and School Association for moving us forward another notch in technology. And now, Paul, would you move the business items?
Yes, I'd like to move items B1 through B6.
Right, may I have a second?
A second.
Teresa?
Sure.
Okay, you got about a second comment? Sorry, Barbara? I couldn't hear, is it roll call time? I was just asking for questions or comments from the board, business items. Doesn't appear that there are any, so would you call the roll? Sure. Mr. Bonnet?
Aye.
Ms. Boialvolucci?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Duloo?
Aye.
Ms. Lang?
Aye.
Mr. Romano?
Aye.
Ms. St. Auburn?
Aye.
Dr. Yares Ramos?
Aye.
Ms. Ginsburg? Aye. Okay, the motion carries. We've come very quickly to the second public comment period for comments or questions on agenda items or other items related to the schools. The same procedure applies, so if you have a question or comment for us, please raise your hand. And I see, Mrs. Sawa, your hand is up first.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on the Equity Project. I heard discussion of looking at the literature and trying to balance it, but one of the more obvious ones too is history classes and social studies. Has any work been done in that area yet?
Okay, was that your only question?
Yes.
Okay, Dirk?
At the high school level, I know there's been discussions through the program leader and I believe social studies is being, curriculum's being reviewed this year and rewritten for next school year, so it will be a big topic of, that we will be handling for the upcoming curriculum review.
Okay, thank you. For those who are not familiar with the curriculum cycle, the various curricula that we use are reviewed in a five-year cycle with certain curricular components reviewed every year. So language arts was this year, history will be next year and so that assures that each topic gets a thorough review. See you from Ravanel.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you guys for the presentation. I had a quick question. Of the six people that you mentioned that were of color, that were new hires, how many are actually teachers? How many are faculty or are they staff? Who's a teacher, who's actually teaching in the schools versus who's a paraprofessional or other staff member?
Okay, Dirk, do you have that information?
Yeah, so I do. There are four teachers, there's also a child study team member and one is a para.
Okay, thank you. I see John Boyle.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, thank you. Well, first, I'd just like to thank the board and Dirk for all the work that you guys have put in to be able to open the schools up and have a hybrid method that has at least the lower schools in the classroom. So thank you for your work. And my questions are, I'm hoping that Dirk could give us an update on the HVAC system at the high school and let us know whether we're on schedule to open by October 5th or if it's moving and if it's going to, if it's moving, you know, how far back.
So we have a meeting actually tomorrow morning with a foreman who's on the job, so we're getting more details. I'm optimistic, but until we have that meeting, I really don't want to guarantee the October 5th date. What I will do is I'll send an update before the end of the week of where we're at with the high school based on the input that we receive tomorrow.
All right, thank you. I see Mrs. Sawa's hand for a second time. Our protocol is that every person gets one opportunity to speak in each of the two public comment periods. So Mrs. Sawa, I would invite you to submit your question or comment by email to us. And I see Rebecca Kieszkowski, I hope I have not massacred your name.
You have not, you did well, thank you. This is Rebecca Kieszkowski at 29 Burnett Street. I have two children at Ridgewood Avenue. And first, I want to say that the teachers are killing it. Every single time I hear every teacher over Google Classroom, I want to give them a hug because they are working so hard. So congratulations to all of them. My question has to do though with the observation of the board and the administration of being able to witness this firsthand and understanding how difficult it is for them to be able to actually teach these children. I have witnessed almost in tears, these teachers working so hard, especially with the littlest ones, to get them to be able to log in, to get them to switch tabs, to understand which notebook they're supposed to be pulling out of a backpack. And my concern is that with 30-minute sessions, we are losing a lot of instruction time and a lot of valuable time where they could be connecting about the material rather than the frustrations of the notebook, the technology, whatever the glitch might be. And while I know we're still in the trial period and everyone's being flexible and understanding about how this is working out, I also want to make sure that this is on everyone's radar for adjustment and consideration because 30 minutes of math for these small kids to be learning is not enough, especially when you take all of those factors into consideration, you're down to about 20 minutes. So I'd just like to understand, you know, what does that review process look like and at what points and how will this be adjusted to be able to help the teachers do their jobs and the students to better learn?
Sure. Dirk?
It is being monitored. The administrators have all of the Google Classroom codes, so they go in and view what's happening in the classroom and I'll make sure that they're watching the transitions a little bit more closely. Now, we are in day six and there's still routines being developed. I will say, being at Central, I'm seeing some improvement with the simple thing of the pre-K and the kindergartens using hand sanitizer, where the first couple of days it was a chore just to get them to use, used to it and just walking through the door and it's gotten better. So we're hoping as routines are developed, some of this process will be smoothed out, but it's, I'm glad you're bringing it to my attention and I will make sure I'll speak to the administrators about that.
Okay, thank you. Lauren Johnson?
Hi, my name is Ashley and I'm a freshman in the high school. School is going as smoothly as can be, but I feel that more time in between classes is needed. Sometimes teachers run over by two minutes and it's hard to stay focused and then switch to the next class. I'm sure the teachers feel rushed also. It's nice to get logged on a minute early and that this makes it challenging. I feel teachers and students need a longer, need a longer time or a bigger time in the middle of the day. Thank you.
Thanks, Ashley. I heard from parents on that issue as well. Dirk, do you want to speak to that?
I think I'm just going to reiterate a little bit of what I said last time where it's, we're in day six and part of this is adjusting to new routines. I will again speak to the administrators about it. I know at the high school, typically between periods, there's four minutes and between the virtual periods, they added an extra minute. So there's a little bit more time than we traditionally have when you have to leave one classroom and walk to another. But if teachers are keeping you beyond their time, that's, that's an issue when we're in a live situation and certainly and certainly going to be an issue in a virtual situation. So I will make sure that Mr. Lawler addressed this with the students, I'm sorry, with the teachers, to make sure that they're dismissed at the proper time to ensure you have enough time to log into your next classroom.
All right, any other comments or questions for the board? I don't see any hands, but we're still in the public comment period. Okay, a reminder that you can send us emails with your feedback. We always appreciate hearing different perspectives. So with that, if there are no further questions or comments or items for our consideration, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
David?
Second.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second. All right, thank you all, and have a good evening.